I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, today in a special meeting, Wednesday, December 22, 2021, we have our very own Pat Bond as counsel. This is the part of a public hearing. Public hearing on the township's intent to adopt the levy. An amount more than 105% of the amount extended upon the final aggregated levy extension for the corporation and special purpose levy for the proceedings of this fiscal year. So if I could please have the clerk do an attendance call?
Absolutely. Trustee Castle?
Yes.
Trustee Soto?
Here.
Trustee Alice?
Here.
Trustee Malenko?
Here.
Subirano Moreno?
Here.
Thank you very much. Can I have a approval of a motion to approve the agenda?
No move.
Second. Can I have a roll call on that, please?
Absolutely. Trustee Malenko?
Here.
Trustee Alice?
Yep.
Trustee Castle? Trustee Soto?
Yes.
Subirano Moreno?
Yes. Oh, okay. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on the levy for this public hearing?
No.
Hearing none? Yeah, please.
So the levy was published in the newspaper of general circulation within the township of Milton.
It's a blackboard.
Giving the public the opportunity to provide input on the levy. And they, when interested, had the opportunity to present themselves here this evening and to provide whatever public comment they thought necessary. The purpose of the fact that it had to be under the Truth in Taxation Act for the 105, more than 105% of the amount extended was as a result of an entry that was not here in the last levy, the last budget, and that had to do with mental health. So that, absent that, it would not have pushed it over. Otherwise, the township levy would have been within that 105% for all other township expenditures. So it appears only when he is present, so you could close the public hearing.
Okay, I will close that public hearing now. I appreciate that everybody did have the opportunity to speak. We're going, moving on to the chairman's report, the creation of the ad hoc committee. We are, actually have Pat Bond here. We're going to be making a personnel committee made up of myself and two other trustees. Purpose of that is to have a committee that people can come to. If you wouldn't mind, go ahead and explain that a little further.
Sure. So there's been some discussions, I know there's been some personnel matters with respect to the township employees. The town trustees, township supervisor have been involved in those. And one of the things under the statutory existence of the Township Act and the code is that there is an assignment of duties for the hiring and the setting compensation essentially. All the other duties are statute silent as to, you know, the duties relative to, what specific duties are, is each employee assigned? How does an employee review get conducted? What happens with employee discipline, employee, any suspension, termination, promotion? None of that is in there. You adopted in July of 2021, an employee handbook. The employee handbook talks about some of these issues, but it doesn't really identify who does that implementation. And that's relatively unusual. And when you've got a city, you usually have a city administrator or a city manager. Those duties all rest with that city administrator, city manager, who then reports to the city council or the building board. The same thing is true in other units of government. In a fire district, for example, you have the, you have a chief. The chief is going to be the chief executive officer of the fire district. He reports and is generally contracted with the board of directors, the board of supervisors, board of trustees, rather. Same thing in park districts. The park district generally has an executive director. The executive director reports to the board. The executive director handles all of those different aspects. So really what you're left with, and you do have somebody who does, your office manager who does HR duties and functions, but what you're left with is a gap in what happens with that, with the charge. Township powers are specifics as capacity to exercise powers granted to it by the legislature and those necessarily implied. What that means is that you are a creature of statute. As a creature of statute, you have those powers that are conferred to you by the legislature. And there's a case that dates back 100 years or so that deals with what's called Dillon's Rule. Justice Dillon said, "And those powers that are," excuse me, "necessarily inferred from the specific grant of powers." So in other words, it says, well, you can levy taxes. Okay, so you adopt your levy. How do you get the money? So somebody has to take that over and file it with the clerk, the levy. That gets the mechanism, and then the money is deposited. It goes to the treasurer and gets deposited into the coffers. So those things are the inferred acts from your statutory grant of power. So then you look at the different officers under the Township Code. And the supervisor is designated as the chief executive officer of the township. Generally, a chief executive officer is going to have, you know, the authority over day-to-day affairs of the township. I think you get, this came up at one point, there's a case, Moore versus Graffton Township, had to do with the hiring of a township attorney. But in there, the courts sort of said, absent anything specific from the legislature, that is the role and function of the supervisor. The ex officio supervisor, the supervisor's ex officio in charge of general assistance. Now, general assistance under the code is unique in that the section that deals with employees specifically excludes the township trustees from involvement with general assistance employees and employees of the supervisor. So there's, it's as if the legislature said, okay, we recognize that. They've essentially conferred that authority specifically to the supervisor. They didn't do it in the Township Act. And I've been doing township law since '89. And I will tell you, it's the tar baby. Every time somebody goes in to make a change to the Township Code, then everybody thinks it's a political, it benefits the Republicans, it benefits the Democrats. And every time that happens, the anti-township organization, there was, a decade ago, there were lawsuits all over the state trying to eliminate township government. And there was a great deal of fight. So my belief, based on how Springfield operates, is they don't want to touch it. Nobody wants to fix it. Clearly, it's something that there's a void. It's a void in need of being fixed. It's not going to be fixed by legislative fix. So then the question is, within the parameters of the statutory conferred authority in the act already, how do you handle these personnel matters? The town board has powers under the act. The employee township employees fix compensation and set rules regarding benefits. So if you look at statutory construction, if you've got specifics, it governs over the general. So as if they've given a laundry list in the statute, you've got a laundry list of, these are the things that you, the town board, can do. It's those three things. And again, it makes sense, because when you fix compensation, you're really doing it on a budgetary standpoint. You're saying, how much are we going to give for personnel? And you have to know, what are we going to pay these people? You know, what's the range going to be? So that seems to make sense. Same thing with benefits. You're going to provide health insurance, you're going to provide this. Well, if you don't know how much it's going to be, it doesn't, you guys set the budget. So you need to know, what are we willing to fund? You know, what money's available before we can say, hey, you're going to get that gold standard of health insurance? If we're not, you say, in one hand, you say, we're going to give it to you. On the other hand, budgetarily, we say, yeah, we can't afford that. So those kind of, you know, in the compensation, those all seem to come into play with what your board charge is relative to funding. So you get to the point where, again, that's exclusive of supervisor employees and general assistance employees. So now what you've got is, you've got, who handles the employment matters? Who handles the employees? And it's really the only unit of government that doesn't have a functioning mechanism to do that. Now, you could hire someone who does exclusively, does that and confer that power to them. Or you can do what I'm suggesting is an alternate solution, and that is to establish this ad hoc committee. The ad hoc committee, because the supervisor statutorily is a chief executive officer, he would be on the ad hoc committee. He would designate the personnel committee members. It would be, because you do have power under the, under the act, the town board powers, for employee compensation and benefits and so forth. So there's, by having representation, that function is still being performed by township trustees who would serve on that. The suggestion is, so you don't have a committee at the whole, essentially. Not have, every single trustee is going to serve on the personnel committee. It's have a three-member committee, still have to comply with the Open Meetings Act. Nothing's going to be done under color of darkness. You're going to be given an agenda, 48-hour notice, all of those things. Now, the difference is, if you're talking about specific employees or discipline or compensation and so forth, Illinois Open Meetings Act has some specifically enumerated exceptions. And 5 ILCS 120/2C1 is one of those. And it says you can talk about employees. So that committee would have the ability, which you, you know, arguably would not, you have the ability to, you would have the ability to engage in those discussions legally outside the purview. You can't make, the committee couldn't make any final decisions, but outside the purview of, you know, of the audience and an open session. And what this does is a couple of things. One, it, right now, the way that it's established, and you know, the white elephant in the room, is that there's some, you know, issues with the functionality of how the township employees and who do they report to? And I challenge anybody on this board, that you have five bosses. Five equally, you know, have equal status. And you could go to any of the five bosses and you could lobby your cause for a raise. You could lobby your cause for your, the way you're being treated and so forth. And I've served in a situation where that was the case. And it was, it was a city. And even though they had a city manager, was the city manager, may not have been as effective and wasn't willing to get involved in some of these things. We had employees that went to their particular alderman that they had a relationship with, and they went and they lobbied their position. And when the city manager in that instance wanted to discipline them or wanted to, when it came time for raids, well, you ought to give, you ought to give my favorite employee a raise. Now, you've got somebody on the board advocating, irrespective of the merits of the raid, irrespective of the, where it is in the range and everything else, is saying, you should do that. I'm an employee. Who do I go to? Do I go to my supervisor, who answers to the board? Who do I just circumvent him? Go right to the board. Now, I'm going to go to you, because you and I have, we've known each other for a long time. So I think you would be good for me. I'll tell you all the things that, that's going on in there. Now, you've got an HR person who doesn't know what's being talked about. Maybe it's true, maybe it's not true. But I have just taken the chain of command and I've undermined the HR, I've undermined the chain of command, because I get to go to any one of the five bosses that I have. That's an unworkable situation. And it's, it seems to have occurred in this township. So, you know, that's a way, it undermines, you've got five masters to serve, masters to serve, you're an employee. It undermines sort of the hierarchy, the chain of command, if you will, the organizational structure. And there's lack of consistency. You know, you may treat people one way and have a certain idea of doing it. You may have a different idea. You might have a different, so everybody, so now, somebody who goes, who happens to go to one of the trustees and got this super great treatment, and then the other one goes to their favorite trustee, and you're not treating me as well as that one, I'm going to go to him now. You know, so now I just, I, we call it forum shopping in the law. We, you can't go and pick the best judge for you. You get one chance to have a recusal. But you can't, you can't shop and get, hey, I want the best judge who's going to give the biggest verdicts or is going to be the harshest in a criminal case or whatever the case may be. So you get employees who are sort of trustee shopping, if you will. I'm going to go to the softy. I'm going to go to the guy who, you know, understands the, you know, the worth of the position I hold. It just renders the organization chart somewhat meaningless. So by creating this ad hoc committee, it consists of the three people. It's got voices from the supervisor, or voices from the town board. The supervisor is the CEO, if you will. And it gives a singular point of contact for personnel matters. So if an employee has an issue, it goes to the employee committee. They don't just get the handpick and shop around for their favorite trustee. It gives your, the individuals' responsibility for, as I understand it, implementing the personnel policy, the personnel, I think you call it personnel handbook. You've got that person, the employee handbook. Person who's got to administer that is going to be uniform. He's going to administer it in a way that's going to be applied to each, regardless of what department. And if he's not doing that, that's a whole nother discussion. Now, that becomes an issue that's going to the personnel committee. Hey, we've got our, our HR guy is, you know, he's playing favorites. You know, but you've got a way of dealing with it. It, you've got, A, it provides you a form to deal with it. B, it gives you the structure that is necessary. C, it gives you the input of the supervisor in his statutory capacity as the, basically the CEO or chief executive officer. And it gives the township trustees a voice on there, which is statutorily conferred upon it, to have involvement in these, but not with, it doesn't give the details. So, you know, it does, it does all that. And again, I think the biggest point that it does, and once we got the, we did this in a community and those employees that went to their favorite alderman, those employees were restricted from reaching out on employment matters. First Amendment says, if you say, you see something you want to talk about, about the township, you know, an employee can always speak their mind, as long as it affects the, you know, matter of public concern, it's called. But I'll tell you, the lynchpin in why I'm recommending this is real simple, and that is liability. You have, you have, didn't you go through your TOYA? You probably had the tort immunity discussion. Okay. Hold on to your horses, because it may be gone before your term's over, because the legislature's been doing that under the police context. It was in the bill. They took it out of the Safety Act at the last minute by lobbying from different police departments and municipalities and sheriff's offices and so forth. But it's out there. And if it goes to the police, yeah, they do something you guys don't do. But once it goes to one unit of government, tort immunity is obliterated. And you have no protection against what you do in your capacity as a trustee. So that's a problem, because here's what tort immunity does. You're a legislative body. That's why no one supervisor, or no one board member, you know, has the authority to just go out and bind the village or the township to anything. So you're a board, you're a unit, you're an entity. That entity has protection. As long as you work within the scope of that entity, you have those protections. Think of it like, you're a municipal corporation is what it essentially is. So think about any other corporate entity where you get, and you see it in the news all the time. The rogue president goes out and does stuff, you know, spends, you know, corporate money, doesn't have the authority to do it. Yeah, he gets fired, she gets fired. But they also lose the protection that they would have had under the insurance, because they're insured under their officers and they've got, a lot of the CEOs will have insurance for things within the scope of their employment. Things that are done within the confines of what their charge of office is. So you have a limited qualified good faith immunity. And when you hear the word qualified, that tells you one thing, and that is, it's not unlimited. It's not absolute. If you wore black and it was a robe, you would have absolute immunity. Judges have absolute immunity for what they do. Even if they make a mistake, they have absolute immunity for what they do. I'll tell you why. Because when the challenge goes to what type of immunity, who's it going in front of? Under a legal challenge. Okay? So you're the judge, what are you going to do? Give yourself some immunity or everything? So the judges have absolute immunity. That's been a challenge in the courts. They tried, the legislature tried to restrict that. And the Supreme Court said, no can do. The justices on the Supreme Court said, you can't restrict our immunity, by the way. It seemed that somebody challenges the conflict of interest. But what happens is, you have this legislative immunity when you're serving in your capacity as a legislator. That's setting a budget. That's establishing policies. That's setting the benefits. All those things that are specifically enumerated in the town code, those are things that you're protected against. That's the thing, those are legislative functions. When you start dabbling in personnel matters, now you lose that immunity. So here's what happens, is you've got an employee, and that employee, let's say that they're transgender or whatever, and they say, well, I had a meeting with this, and this person, this trustee, made an off-color comment of why we have to share bathrooms with everybody. Why we don't have a men's and women's bathroom anymore? That's crazy. Wait a minute, did you just discriminate against me as a transgender individual? Well, you're, you're going to say, of course I didn't, I asked a question. Okay, now take that into the court of public opinion, and more importantly, into a court of law. Now, you've got to defend against that. You've got to prove in fact, that's not what I said or what I intended when I said it. As a, and again, you meet with an employee and they talk about it. It's you and the employee. That's who's there. Your word against my word. And I'm reading about these big settlements that people are getting, you know, for their, you know. Change the paper real good.
Oh, boy.
So, you know, you see them all the time. These, Chris Naught, who I think grew up in Glen Ellen, or at least lived in Glen Ellen, you know, from Sex in the City, whatever he's on. So he's an actor. He got, he got fired from like five different jobs, because somebody made an accusation of improper sexual advances. Well, you have somebody who says that about a trustee, and you don't, that's not part of your, personnel is not part of your charge. So you, now you've got personal exposure. You have to go get your own lawyer. You have to defend against those charges, because that is outside of the parameters of your legislative role and responsibilities. It's beyond, if you will, in the private sector, it's beyond your scope of duties as a trustee. So my suggestion, my recommendation with the, you know, as a supervisor in the capacity as a chief executive officer, an ad hoc committee is, you know, Latin for, this is it. I've got some definitions, in case I thought people might want to know what it means. But an ad hoc committee is generally just intended, when you've got a, you've got a situation where, it's Latin phrase for literally to this. And when it comes up is, it's a, it is intended when the need, there's a need or something is necessary, it's for a particular purpose as necessary. So you've got a situation with personnel, you've got no statutory provision that you can point to and you can hang your hat on and say, well, this, we have the authority to do all of these things. So now you're acting kind of ultra virus, which means outside of the scope. And once you do that, that opens you to personal liability, opens the township possibly to liability exposure. You avoid all that by creating and establishing, which the supervisor has the right to establish essentially, any ad hoc committee. But you do it for personnel matters, and then it's a recommending body. That, that body makes recommendations ultimately and come back to the board. So it, it's, you know, fully compliant with the Township Code, and it gets you out of the business of personnel and gets you out of the liability exposure that you could be subject to under the current conditions.
Pat, could I ask you a question?
That's what we're here for.
Absolutely. So my, my question is, is this, in your experience, is this a best practice? Is this something that you're seeing with other townships, other municipal entities? And this is, this is kind of a best practice?
Okay, so those are two questions. One, is it a best practice? And two, is it done in other? Most townships, I will tell you, most townships, the supervisor using that phraseology that, you know, the supervisor is going to be, and again, it says the chief executive officer. Generally, a chief executive officer has oversight over day-to-day matters. It doesn't specifically say that, it's how it's been interpreted. So generally, the supervisor handles all of those types of things in other townships. But in municipalities, park districts, they have a person for that purpose. And there's case law in, specifically in the municipal arena for cities and villages, where when they have gotten outside of that, it's specific that that is beyond the scope of their authority as a sitting alderman or village trustee. So because you don't have that, I think everybody has been, and I think that was the practice here, under Chris Heidorn and, who was here before him?
Oh, I don't remember.
I've been around a long time, I don't remember who it was. But that was the practice for multiple, you know, supervisors over the years. That was a practice. Is this a best practice? I think it is, because I think it, it has the input of the trustees, because there is that statutory, employ the township employees, fix the compensation, set the benefits. That's a role of the town board. I think that's consistent with that role. And yet it doesn't open you up to liability or personal liability exposure. And the thing that's most unworkable is, so how many bosses do you have?
Two men.
How many immediate bosses do you have?
One. Just one.
I know one sure would figure once again, but I'll take it as one.
That's your wife, right?
Yeah, that's it.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, so it's unusual that you would, you would have in most organizations where you would have somebody, you have a boss, and that boss has a boss, and that boss has a boss. Yeah, that's the linear organizational chart. And you might have a boss on, you know, here's, here's our operational thing, and then here's our, you know, what? We're philanthropic, that's, this person's in charge of that. But to have, you know, five people who have equal authority to be involved in personnel matters is really a unique situation and unheard of. The way to corral that is to have a singular point of content. And that's what, my opinion, to answer your first question, best practice. This is the best practice. The alternative is the township supervisor acts as they do in others and simply, you know.
Does everything.
Does everything.
Gotcha.
So, so yes, it is a best practice. And no, that's not utilized in other townships, because they use a different system. And that is the supervisor acts in that capacity exclusively on his or her own.
So that being said, you know, I will take recommendations from all of you. You have the opportunity to just simple email if you'd like to serve on this board. There really isn't anything else unless you guys have questions on this, which we have, Pat, here. You can ask away.
Yeah, I have a few things to add. So if this board is to be formed, doesn't it have to be passed by the board through a vote?
It does not, because it's an ad hoc committee. It serves for that, that purpose. Now, at some, at some point in time, if you want to create, you know, establish a committee structure, you certainly can. You could establish, and you, you as a board, to say, we're going to have a committee structure that is going to, you know, we talked about the not-for-profit board. We want to have a committee that is going to specifically work with the not-for-profit board or work with the food pantry. And you could establish those would be standing committees as opposed to an ad hoc committee. The ad hoc committee is really designed to address a need and how best to address it. And again, as the, as the chief executive officer, he has that authority. It's not a board action in that regard.
Okay, well, with that being said, I kind of have some thoughts that I put together in preparation for this discussion. So I'll just start right from the top. We are part of a team, and that's the township team. While the statutes provide specified duties for each elected township officer, no one official operates in a vacuum. Democracy system of checks and balances, and Illinois laws require township officials to directly interact with one another when conducting the township's business. Inserting an ad hoc committee containing presumably, or it doesn't look like that is the case now, unelected officials serves to short-circuit this arrangement and even goes as far as usurping the authority of the trustees.
Can I, maybe, because this might address?
No, just let me finish my thoughts, I appreciate that, and then you can give me some.
Yeah, I forgot to give it out, that's what I meant to.
Our township employees interact, let me back up. Even goes as far as usurping the authority of the trustees. Our township employees interact with the entire board and are comfortable doing so. As a trustee, I welcome dialogue from the employees. The trustees are involved in the approval of hires, terminations, as indicated in 60 ILCS 1/100-5, and have the capacity and authority to interact with the employees with regard to any and all issues. An ad hoc committee isn't necessary, nor is it welcome, in my opinion. But what I really want to get to is, there's an impetus behind the idea of an ad hoc committee. And that is one of retribution on behalf of Supervisor Manino. It's unfortunate, but I'll cite the following instances where Shirley, which Shirley brought this to bear. On December the 11th, I had a phone conversation with Supervisor Manino where I explained that I thought it was not a good idea to leave [BLEEP] as the only one tending to the township side of the building while the senior party on December 10th was going on. Manino insisted that all other staff attend the party during an extended lunch hour that lasted approximately two hours. I'd also like to add that this exact same situation occurred again on December 17th, after I expressed to him that this was an unsafe practice to leave our newly hired [BLEEP] all alone. In this instance, Manino took all staff except for [BLEEP] out to lunch. During the same conversation on the phone on December 11th, I told Supervisor Manino about a township employee [BLEEP] that pulled me aside at the senior party and pleaded with me to please do something. That Manino was ill-tempered and snapping at everyone in the office. Manino's response was- Menino's response with respect to both issues was that he had done nothing wrong. With respect to leaving, just thought he was exercising a nice gesture by bringing all the other staff to the senior party. She wasn't pleased. With respect to [BLEEP] complaint, Menino brushed it off and voiced his displeasure of her not completing all the tasks that he had ordered her to. My summation of this situation simply doesn't welcome the input of the trustees, especially if its critical in nature contains construction, constructive criticism. His idea of the ad hoc committee is simply to push the trustees out of the way with regard to interaction with township employees. And I'll also add, I didn't see this being a problem with the previous administration and I really appreciate the work on this path and I really think it's a reach, guys.
Well, let me just hand this, and I apologize if I mean before. So this is, this is the, the ad hoc personnel committee established to have a singular point of contact for township employment, employee matters, exclusive of general assistance. Employment matters, all personnel matters for both the trustees and the employees shall be referred. So on the contrary, I don't think it's a use of that authority because it's going to consist of the composition, the township supervisor and two township trustees. Supervisor points the members and times to time their replacements as necessary. And with respect to the statutory construction, there's nothing in the town powers in the section you recited. It says the town board may fix compensation of township employees. That doesn't necessarily translate in all instances to terminate and, and discipline and doing all those. And the argument to that from a statutory construction standpoint is if that was intended, that would have been included in. It would have said to fix compensation of township employees. It does talk about setting benefits. It would have said in handling these other matters. So the, the things and the instances that you've raised is, is binds us to the need for this ad hoc committee. That goes whether it's a trustee or whether an employee, it's going to go to the committee. I assume you're going to have your HR person involved if there's matters that rise to that level. And it's going to, their, their charge is, this has changed, charge addressing all personnel matters exclusive of the general system. There's no, that's a very clear statutory deferral to the supervisor. And, you know, hiring, promotion, compensation, discipline, governance, termination, scheduling, work environment and other similar issues. So all of those matters exclusive of the township budget, which remains the, the compensation matters under the budget remain the trustee as a, as a body. So what this does is it addresses those concerns. There's still the checks and balances because it's got input from both. And again, previously, that was not the case. Township supervisor, you know, to personnel matters, to personnel action, exclusive of the board. Did he tell the board? I assume he did. I don't know what the communication was, but that was how it was handled. That's how it's handled in, in other townships. What this does is it, it handles it in a different way and it's a two-way street. If the employee wants to, to complain, they don't pick a trustee, go to a specific trustee. That's a, that's an untenable way of, they have to go to the personnel committee. They make their complaint, personnel committee can discuss it, can investigate it if they need and can bring, bring a resolution to it. And the same thing with the trustees. You hear things, you're, you're members of the, you live here, you see these people, you interact with them and you hear things, you say, hey, I heard this, you know, well, let's look into it. Because there's no, right now, a trustee have no investigatory powers. A trustee has no other powers relative to discipline by law, by statute. So when you start going beyond what the statutory grant of authority is, that's where you get into potential personal liability exposure and that's, that's just...
So is that, is, this is exactly how we're, Dan are basically in attack for the trustees with, with super. So I mean, this is basing it on paper and doing it.
Do it.
And from just... So just clear the air. We never, or sought out, as we've done that. You know, I think even said it is that if someone's uncomfortable about what he, it's most very small. And I don't believe that any, anything came to the complaint. Just in for though. As you can explain, the, no, I, you know, is, is that, you know, that all should have a say. A lot of the, is, you know...
Why it doesn't work.
And, and, you know, none of our employees should perfectly agree with going to our manager. So I don't know where he, how high that ad hoc committee.
The, the org should, and if it's an issue that needs to go, yeah, I mean, some people go, if it's close to the, then it, then responsibility to get this to the personnel committee.
My understanding of it is that, that it was representative of the board, not just these, all five of us.
But that, and again, the employees feel, that's great, you are well, but they're both go undermine office manager.
There's a reason for this.
So I mean, that's, that's, that's what this is designed to...
There's really nothing else to add. And I, I hear your guys' concerns. If you want to be on this committee, it's a simple email to me. And we're gonna put this thing together. There are other things going on that, that will rise to the occasion. Believe in my heart that this is the right thing to do. That's why I sought counsel because it's every day. I know you guys are very involved as trustees and there are other committees being formed as well. We have a building situation that we're dealing with. Has everybody, just by a nod, has everybody done their open meetings act? Is that done? Yes? Open meetings?
You guys, I don't know that you shouldn't do that. I think you side spent out so...
You know, these are things that where you're concentrating so hard on other things, there's things as trustees you need to really do. And I'm, I'm not here to beat you guys up. I know you guys are busy, you have your own businesses, but at the same time, these are little things that we need to make sure we get done. I sent those things to you. It does take a good 45 minutes to do. On that, a lot to learn right there. And it really, Mr. Booksmart over here, you're, you're gonna love it because it really divulges a lot of information in one little shot. So that being said, you know, if you're interested in serving, that's great. Let me know right away, please.
And the only thing I would say is, is once, once established and, and the committee composition is there, you know, I, I do think we'll find that if there is this singular point of contact, both for the people who come to you or things that you hear, oh, they have to go to their, it's, you know, they don't, I mean, it's here, it's too hot, like it's really hot here. You know, it's too hot. I can't work under these conditions and it's inappropriate for me to wear shorts. I should be able to go somewhere and, and, you know, and have that. That's, that's, you know, those kinds of things. You know, so as opposed to complaining to you guys and say, please, he keeps a, really, Alex keeps this place so hot or so cold or whatever. It's not really what you're here for. You set the policy, you set the direction, you're governing the township, you're not micromanaging employees. I think you'll find that this, this will address, you know, and nothing's a, you know, all in one fix, but I think you'll find based on my experience, I've been doing municipal laws since I started after I left the state senate office since 1989, this is an unusual situation.
I'll say a picture.
It's an unusual situation where, and whether it's, it's in your private sector or public sector where you don't have that, that kind of singular point. And again, it's the township act. There's, there's, you know, you said there's gray area in it. The gray area is there because nobody wants to touch it. Because as soon as you touch it, now you get this attack on township government in, in general. So that's why there's gray area. This is designed to, to fill in the gaps on the gray area within the confines of what the specific black letter law is under the code.
As you guys are serving on different committees that we're going to be putting together, there was a long time that I was serving as trustee. Not trying to get you involved in this conversation out, but you were a trustee at one time. A lot of these committees were not formed. Nobody ever had this authority over us and it was one entity handled it all. There were several times that I'd walk in and there'd be a new person sitting at the desk. It's like, oh, who are you? It's, oh, okay. And this, this will play a big role as well. Future ad hoc committee is going to be very soon is the building purchase. There's, you know, I think we're going to be forming something very soon with that as well. Cause we just got a, you know, and this is the discussion for later, but we just got an astronomical bill to repair this building and an update that we need. That's a quote. Thank you so much. The bid is what I meant to say. So, you know, where do we stand as far as this? There's a lot to discuss and a lot more involvement that I'm gonna have to ask some of the trustees to be a part of. And that being said, we've got other stuff to do. So we're gonna go right into number three, new business. There is no miscellaneous others other than the open meetings act, which I already told you guys, it's pretty important. You got a long, hopefully a Christmas break that I don't expect you to look on that right then and there, but I can guarantee I did it. There was a glitch in the open meetings act system. I got to question 11 and the thing shut down on me. So I actually did it twice in less than an hour. So you guys being as book smart as you are, you'll be able to fly through it quickly. That's it for miscellaneous other. Onto new business, the op, we're gonna go right into it.
No, you have, yeah, you have to do separate motions.
We're gonna do separate motions, obviously.
Are there independent levies for each of those four purposes?
Okay. We're gonna go into number A. E... Yeah. You got that there?
No.
Do we have the copies of the highway in front of us?
No, we only have three signed copies. We got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have, I think there's multiple copies.
That still needs, once approved, we'll need the signature copy.
If you guys want, real quick, just put them all in order if you want. There's only three copies.
And again, because they are for separate levies, you mean they'll have to sign...
Okay, these are the ones that actually have to be signed. There's no, is there any from the highway that all these guys could see real quick? This is the actual, we are signed. These and these. So do you want to keep these or you don't want to keep the whole?
I think those are all the highway. That's mental health. Just take out the top one.
So traditionally, what we've done?
They're all mental health.
Yeah, make sure, those are the only copies I have.
Here, I've got mental health.
Here. Alex.
I've got special police district. I've got mosquito abatement district.
Right, that's what we should be, we are.
And we probably just sign...
There's a what?
We just sign on highway because we don't set that level. We just approve.
So I've got, I've got the tentative from our last meeting. It's the exact same thing.
Does anybody need to see it?
You guys want to pass this one around?
That's fine.
Just needs to get filed.
Yes, and we don't want to lose that.
So Alex, this sort of board certification, the only thing different between the tentative and this is you removed the tentative and it's been signed by the...
Oh, this needs to be signed by the board as well.
It does. But you have to approve it first, as you know.
So John.
So my suggestion would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 021-6, the road district levy.
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
Is it a copy or is it a...
I don't know about a true...
Who has a second one? Dan?
Now we pass that around and sign it.
Correct. All right, so we have to vote.
Yes.
Voice vote or roll call?
Roll call.
Roll call?
Each one.
Okay. Trustee Soto?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Castle?
Yes.
Trustee Malenko?
Yes.
Supervisor Manio?
Yes. Okay, the adoption of, and that passes, by the way. The adoption order number ODS-21-5, special police district levy. Could I have a motion to approve?
So, second.
Second. We got Joe and Jeff. Can you please call a roll on that, Mr. Clerk?
Absolutely. Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Castle?
Yes.
Trustee Malenko?
Yes.
Trustee Soto?
Yes.
Supervisor Manio?
Yes. And then we have the adoption of the ordinance number 0-21-4. This is a consolidated Milton Glen Allen mosquito abatement levy. Can I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
It's Castle and Drew. Ellis. Could I please get a roll call on that?
Absolutely. Trustee Malenko?
Yes.
Trustee Castle?
Yes.
Trustee Soto?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Supervisor Manio?
Yes. Then our final, D, adoption of ordinance 0-21-3, the town, this is the actual general assistance levy. Could I have a motion?
And community mental health board.
This is the whole thing, sorry.
The town, community health and, yes, you're right. Community health board and the general assistance levy.